Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the Village of Rhinebeck Board Meeting for September 21st. We have a very full agenda. So what I'd like to do is get started right away with the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing I'd like to do is, if everybody remembers, we had an election last Tuesday. And I'd like to introduce our board to everybody, especially the new members on the board. But first, I'd like to start off with Brad Nunaker, who's been re-elected to the board for how many times now?
Four.
Four times? You know, so congratulations, Brad. Welcome to have you. And Vanessa Bertozzi, who is newly elected to the board and is joining us now for the first time. So thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we're going to go into an organizational meeting. This is required. We scheduled this several times as a result of COVID. And what I do is I read our organizational structure into the record. And then if he ends at the organizational structure, we then vote on approving it. So I'm going to go, if you don't mind, we are all at six feet spacing up here. So it's hard sometimes to talk. So when I get through this, I'm going to take my mask off, but I will put it back on so it's easier for you to hear. Plus, I get all fogged up. Okay. So this is the Village of Rhinebeck Organizational Meeting for September 21st, 2020, for the official year of 2020 and 2021. Our regular monthly board meetings are going to be held the second Tuesday of the month at 6:00, which is a change from previous. So we will be starting at 6:00 PM going forward. The next organizational meeting, which will be a year, well, not a year, because of the delayed elections, will be April 6th of 2021. The meeting place is here, Village Hall, 76 East Market Street, Rhinebeck, New York. Our official repository is the M&amp;T Bank. Our official newspaper is the Daily Freeman. Mayor is myself, Gary Bassett. Deputy Mayor, Richard Lloyd. Village Clerk, Martina McClinton. Deputy Clerk, Christine Deneau. Treasurer, Karen McLaughlin. Attorney, McCaven Mack. And Rich Olson is representing McCaven Mack for us. Assessors are the Town of Rhinebeck. The Billing Department Liaison is Paul Corchek. The Billing Inspector and Code Enforcement Officer is John Fenton. Emergency Response Coordinator, we are currently reevaluating his position and working with the county. Our Engineers for the Village of Rhinebeck is Kai Ambon. The Environmental Committee Liaison and Chair, newly elected trustee Vanessa Bertozzi. Environmental Specialist, Vanessa Bertozzi. Ethics Committee Liaison, Richard Lloyd. Fire Department Liaison, Gary Bassett. Fire Chief, Kyle Amy. Highway Department Liaison, Richard Lloyd. Highway Department Foreman, Acting, is Scott Minn. Historian, Mike Fraser. Justice Court Liaison, Gary Bassett. Justice-elect, William Sanchez. Associate Justice, John Kane. Court Clerk, Patricia Giacomo. Parks, Village, the Parks, which covers the village's parks and the representative to the Thompson-Massarello Park Board for the Town of Rhinebeck, is Richard Lloyd. Planning Board Liaison, Paul Corchak. Planning Board Chair, David Miller. Planning, Zoning, and Building Clerk, Ryan Dowden. Police Department Liaison, Gary Bassett. Police Officer in Charge, Peter Dunn. Police Department Clerk, Danielle Rector. Register of Vital Records is the Town Clerk, which is John Gautier. Department Deputy Register of Vital Records, the Deputy Town Clerk, Joan Winnie. Records Maintenance Officer, Martina McClinton. Superintendent of Public Works, John Fenton. Tax Collector, Karen McLaughlin. Assistant Tax Collectors are Christine Deneau and Martina McClinton. Tree Committee Liaison, Richard Lloyd. Tree Committee Chair, Meg Crawford. Village Hall Liaison, Gary Bassett. Waste Water Department Liaison, Brad Nunaker. Chief Waste Water Treatment Plan Operator, Brian Becomo. Water Department Liaison, Brad Nunaker. Chief Water Treatment Plan Operator, Brian Alex. Zoning Board of Appeals Liaison, Paul Corchak. Zoning Board Chair, Colton Johnson. We also write into record our mileage allowance established by the IRS and adjusted annually is .575 per mile. Casteration for advanced payment of claims is a public utility or service and postage approval process. Just for the record, we are a drug-free workplace for harassment and discrimination, workplace violence, vehicle use, seminar attendance approval forms, procurement policies, ethics code, time reporting policy, time request forms, and meeting policies and procedures. I'd like to make a motion to accept our organizational chart for the year 2020, 2021.
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? So carry. Thank you. Next, our county legislator, Brendan Kearney. We have some additions today for those who are viewing from the outside. We're going to couple adjustments to the agenda. Brendan called me today and would like to have a couple of minutes on the floor. So Brendan Kearney, our county legislator.
Where do I talk? Oh!
So we don't have a microphone to talk about.
Hello, everybody. Congratulations to the two board members.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to just remind the public and the board about a couple of events that are coming up, countywide, and then give you an update on a couple of the things that I've been working on publicly. As you know, the village is working on justice, police reform, and on Saturday, September 26th, and Gary, I'm sure you've already announced this, or...
I will.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm going to jump the gun. Saturday, September 26th, from 3:00 to 5:00. Is it at the Town Hall, I believe?
It's a virtual meeting. It's not at the Town Hall.
All right. So no one will be...
It's a virtual meeting. You have to register.
Yes, that's what I was going to tell you. If you want to speak...
I have the flyer.
Good. Okay. So Gary's going to tell you all about it. The county is hosting forums on justice reform, and the one covering Rhinebeck is on the 26th.
Correct.
We're a team.
Brendan, if I can interrupt, since we really haven't, I don't have to repeat, they do not have to attend our geographic meeting.
No.
People can attend any meeting. Now, regardless of your geographic location, there's a list of them that are published out on the county website.
Yep.
And you can register for any meeting or all the meetings, if you would like.
Yep. There are links to it on my Facebook page, if you prefer, wherever you want to find it. And there's also a Spanish language forum on Tuesday, September 29th, to vote in Spanish. A reminder that Friday, October 9th, is your last day to register to vote. It's my public service announcement. And then I wanted to give you an update. I know that you know I've been working with one of my colleagues from the Kipsey on a youth court for Duchess County. You can find out more information. I have a ton of information on youth courts and youth restored justice principles and other programs on my Facebook page. We have submitted a resolution. It's been kicked back a couple times. So we are hoping that it may be moved forward for consideration in October. If you want to read the resolution again, you can go to my Facebook page. You won't find it yet on the county pages because I'm still working with Craig to get it through onto the official agenda. Another thing is, you may have heard me announce that for a while, our stabilization center for the county for mental health and addiction issues was closed to walk-in candidates throughout the summer because of COVID. And the center will be, just this past weekend, I believe, reopened for in-person visits. That's still a sort of project that continues for me. I'd like the county to provide more key statistics about who's using the center so that we can make sure it's staffed properly and that people are receiving all the resources they need. I'd also like to see an in-person prescribing doctor, which is not something that the county has provided yet, so I'll continue to push for that. So those are sort of the two big things. The county is also calling for nominations for local COVID heroes. You can find that on the county page. You can find it on my Facebook page. I have nominated Rhinebeck Response. And if anyone wants to make suggestions to me, I would love to hear them. I would love to see a lot of the hard work and Rhinebeck recognized, when the county recognizes people throughout the county who've done extraordinary things during this. And then a final reminder, please subscribe to the Duchess Voice, DuchessVoice.com. That's the newsletter that I'm putting out with my pockets at least once a month. We promise not to bother you more than twice. But it's the best place I know to sort of have an up-to-date look at what's going on at the county level. It's been, as you know, my daily, trying to just increase awareness of what happens at the county level, what I'm doing, what my colleagues are doing. So please, theduchessvoice.com. That's it.
Thank you, Brad.
Yes, you're welcome. Anything on anyone's mind? Just him again with our forums here.
Waiting for Trustee Lewis to come back. Now we'll be going into pretty much our regular meeting. And what we always start off with is how we're broadcasting this meeting, and Trustee Lewis always reads that.
Since we are socially distanced, we can remove our masks when we're speaking. Tonight's meeting is being streamed on Facebook Live. People may make comments, but we will not be reading or responding to those comments on the air. The broadcast will also be available on the Panda website in the next couple of days.
Thank you. Okay. The other adjustment to the schedule is we do have two board members from the Rhinebeck Farmers Market here, and Georgina, and, I'm sorry.
Nicole Lawson.
Nicole, nice to meet you. All right. So what I will do is I'll read that in if anybody has any questions, what the Rhinebeck Farmers Market would like. So during, if everybody knows who's attended the Rhinebeck Farmers Market locally, you know that it has changed dramatically while we're in the COVID period. They've had to redesign their existing space to allow for more space for vendors and for socially distancing of those vendors at that site. So what they have asked is if they could continue to do that, because it was temporary, in through the, till the end of the year, because it doesn't look like we're going to be exiting out of any COVID requirements anytime soon. And the next thing, because of planning, they would like to know if they could start the planning process and keep the space that they have today and are currently using into next year, knowing that if conditions change and they can condense, they can then, we can readdress it at that time. So they've come to the board and asked for permission to start that planning process into the next year for the Farmers Market. Does anybody have any questions while, for that?
Well, I also just want to say, congratulations. The Farmers Market won Best of the Hudson Valley. So, well done.
Nice.
Are there any other competing uses?
Not that I'm aware of. Anybody have any aware?
All right. So to what period would that end? What's the extension period for...
The extension goes until the 27th of December.
Okay.
Then we break, and we start in May.
That's about what we did last year, right?
Yeah. It's the same plan. Right? And if you remember, last board meeting, we voted to allow them to use it during the center clause time, because center clause will not be present in December. All right. So I'd like to make a motion to allow the Rhinebeck Village Farmers Market to extend into their space for the remainder of the year and to start the planning process for the 2021 year.
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Gary?
Aye.
Sorry. Just sort of the discussion. I think we should make a note that as part of the process for following year that is starting in May, we should attempt or put on the agenda to coordinate with any activities of the Chamber of Commerce. You know, looking forward into 2021, we may want to revive or at least consider reviving the particular street arrangement and sidewalk arrangement, if there is that sort of discussion that we bring in, the Farmers Market folks, and do it to weigh in for the planning process.
Is that the community table, is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
So the community table is not run by the Chamber, it's run by the village, by Estha Village?
No, but also the whole picture of how the village is going to conduct business in the summertime, if they have that discussion, I think there should be coordination among all departments.
Get later in the, later in the agenda.
Okay, good.
We'll get to that. All right. Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carry. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Don't tell them you're getting out early. All right. Next on the agenda is the discussion about court consolidation, and we have a presentation
And appreciate the opportunity to present to you folks the findings from the study that we conducted over the summer or maybe in the spring. So I first introduction, my name is Kathleen Ruddy. I'm a local government specialist with Le Verre Group. And we hope the seat may to just kind of put in context of why was the study initiated? How did it come about? What was the process of the study? And what were the really critical key findings and opportunities that we found throughout the process that we wanted to report to you folks and give you something for your consideration? So the Le Verre Group has a government operations efficiency team. I am a member of that, as well as Ben Sidon, who is not able to be here tonight. But the two of us were the primary persons that worked on this study. So when we talk about, why did we look at consolidation? I think that there are some very obvious pieces that triggered the discussion in the first place. Both the village and the town are operating municipal courts directly across the street from each other. They're reviewing the same kinds of offenses, statutes, New York State statutes and local statutes. So is there an opportunity, when courts are so close, they're covering similar statutes and offenses, but just for people who attend in different jurisdictions, either inside the village or outside the village? Both municipalities have relatively medium-sized, small, medium-sized courts. So does that present any opportunity for you folks to work together as a greater Rhinebeck community to deliver some opportunities for savings, consolidation, improvements for your constituents? And also to see, and so I think both bodies, the village, Board of Trustees, and the Town Board, said it is at least worth looking at, taking a deeper dive to see what's in it and what were the opportunities. So a really key piece to know is that villages are not required by New York State law to have a justice court. Town courts, on the other hand, are. So that becomes just the basis of information so that you know that you have the legal rights to look at the abolishment of the village court, so should you choose. And then layer that with an opportunity that Duchess County presented to the village and towns, they have the County Municipal Inhibitions Program. And through that grant program, the town and the village elaborated and went and received a grant to fund the study on behalf of both the town and the village. So the town, you folks, and the town asked us to focus on five key things. First one is, can we drive savings for our property taxpayers? Second, at the same time, can we improve services? Can we make it easier? Can we make it simpler for residents, for all the stakeholders in the system? Can we eliminate duplication of activity? Can we improve court security in this day and age? Court security is a very important, very important aspect of justice courts. How can, how could this process facilitate that? And finally, at the same time, as part of the process, can we look at our court facilities and our court improvements that could be made and maybe could be facilitated because of a consolidation process? So before we get into looking at what were some of the key findings, we just want to walk through, what is the process to dissolve the village court? The first step is, you folks decide what you want to do, should you choose to dissolve the court. It can happen by resolution of the local law, subject to permissible referendum. The effective date of abolishment must be parallel with the end term of the sitting justice court, which in your instance right now is March 31st of 2021. And then there's a process to move all of the activities and the cases from the village to the town court. So what do we want to look at? We wanted to look at the overview of the courts. Is there any differences in what folks do, this side of the street versus the other side? Very little. The types of cases, the relative size of caseloads are fairly similar. We wanted to look at the court facilities. We wanted to look at the operations of each of the courts, and we wanted to do a fiscal review, and then try to pull it all together and come up with a series of findings and hopefully potentially opportunities. So the process that we undertook, first, the Town Board, to the mayor, and the deputy mayor, and the town supervisor, and the board, established a steering committee made up of the mayor, the deputy mayor, supervisor, Spenzian, and, I don't know who's here, yes,
Chauncey. Chauncey Walker.
Yes, Chauncey Walker, on the Town Council. We then took a series of time to collect data, information, we did a lot of interviews. Judge Kane, who was here this evening, was interviewing Cameron's staff, other staff in the village, other staff in the town, to really get a feel for how does it function day to day inside the courts. Then we also conducted facility tours. We brought in one of our colleagues to the licensed architect at New York State, and he came to me, the, what the town officials kind of asked to give us, facility tours. How does the building's function? How does the flow of the courts work? What would be some opportunities for improvement? And then what we did was we prepared a review of current state, what we're thinking about now, and then what would be some opportunities and possibilities for your consulting. So as we, as we went through the study and sort of pulled together the findings, we also found very quickly that there were really some very exciting opportunities that, to present to you folks in terms of what could consolidation bring to you. So I think the first, the first and obvious piece is, right now, you're running parallel courts, very close together, you have the same justices operating in both courts, and you're doing a lot of things twice. A lot of the reporting, conducting sessions, initiating sessions. And a lot of that, if you collapsed them, can create some opportunity for just common sense, streamlining of services, makes it a little easier for the public to understand where they're going, when they go, as an example. The other thing is you're using two rooms, two beautiful rooms that you both have, for courts. If you collapse them, it does present an opportunity to release one for more community kinds of activities. And as you know, the Town Board reviewed the study last week and unanimously supported the concepts in the plan, including the willingness to be the host of the town court in a consolidated mahogany, which would then free up this room for other kinds of activities. With this, we also found, because we could reduce some duplication, we could find savings, savings for the greater property taxpayer in the Rhinebeck community, specifically $26,000. To the village, the savings is a little bit more. It's about $45,000 to the, $45,000 to the village, with a slight increase in cost to the town as the person taking over the potential court. But overall, a savings of $26,000. Big piece of the, what we saw as the opportunity, and just the common sense of this, is just taking two parallel functions, so similar, so close in proximity, and making them one, making it a one-stop shop. Judge Kane has shared with us numerous stories of individuals who thought they should go to the village court at 4:30, when it really should have been the town court at 5:30 on the same evening. Or numerous people coming in to pay fines or to work out different paper issues with the clerks, and they're in the wrong building. The office hours are different in one building than they are in the other. So with a one-stop shop, we could see if we could package something that made a heck of a lot of sense for the residents and the other kinds of stakeholders. Now, when I talk about stakeholders in a court system, you're really talking about the district attorney, public defenders, conflict defenders, private attorneys, the sheriffs, transportation detail. These folks, many times, are going all over the county to various justice courts throughout the month, multiple times. The more you streamline those courts, the more that they're in one location, there's one phone number you call, the hours are set for the particular courts. It makes everyone's lives easier. The court clerks shared numerous stories of their having to spend enormous amounts of time fielding phone calls, pointing people in the right direction, rescheduling them because they thought they had a village court case, when in fact, they had a town court case, and vice versa. And so all of these things come together to say, you're really, you're really getting a lot of, a lot of value through a consolidated court. The other kinds of opportunities is that in this day and age, as we, as we look to improve court security operations, with one court, you can make those investments and you can make those inventions once rather than twice. And there are, there are a number of opportunities that, over time, that the courts could consider, and doing it once is far more cost-effective than doing it twice. Both the village and the town asked us to look at the court facilities and tell us, what should we do? How do we make improvements to make the court better going forward and for the future? And I think the greatest opportunity you have is that your court, your town courtroom is clearly large enough and sufficient to serve as a consolidated court. That's a, that's a huge uplift in terms of decision-making around consolidation. You've got a great room to work with. And I, and there's also grant opportunities that can fund... And I, and there's also grant opportunities that can fund some of those facility improvements. And we'll walk through those a little bit more. Some of them may be on pause right now, but we would anticipate that a number of those will come back into play over time. So again, I want to, the court location and the fact that you have a courtroom that this, with the size that works wonderfully for a consolidated court is a really huge bonus and makes this decision-making, it, it just simplifies the decision-making. This is just to point out that, again, both village and town courts are hearing the same kinds of cases and in the same kind of relativity of, of, of size. The town court's probably about 20-something percent greater than the village right now. But other than that, there's really not a lot of distinction in what they're doing. The staffing, right now, you have a justice in the village and an acting justice, and you have two justices in the town. In a consolidated model, in reviewing what other courts, slightly larger than you folks, do, most of them can function with two justices, and they can function with two, about two full-time equivalent staff. So we, we use that basic model for, for looking at the, at the study. And it really is kind of, you, you kind of fit in a particular norm of, of size of what your staff would look like. So we're ma- basically maintaining the same level of staff, but they would be consolidated in one spot, they would be able to cover for each other more. It just makes a lot more sense. So right now, the village justice court has two vehicle and traffic courts a month and two criminal courts a month. Similarly, the town justices have the same, two vil- two vehicle and traffic and two criminal cases, criminal court cases. In a townwide model, with a lot of input from the justices and from what other, other municipalities in this, in your slice range look at, is that we could probably collapse from the eight sessions, scheduled sessions, sessions a month down to six. And that really would come in the criminal justice arena. So it gives you an opportunity to do, to get one more streamlining in this, in this And office operations. Right now, the village hours are 9:30 to 4:00, and the town have two part-time staff that stagger Monday, the various days, 9:30 to 2:00 p.m. What a townwide court does is you now take these folks and you put them all in one spot. You now always have, you can now always have office coverage Monday, Friday. You can get your court sessions covered in the evenings. You, it results in less missed calls to your, to the public, to this, and to your other It facilitates getting fees and fines paid. People know where to go. They, they have one phone number, they're less missing of, of court dates. It all just sort of rolls in and adds to the consolidated model. So there's a little bit of iterative value going on. When you have full-time justice court office operation, that's facilitating efficiency because of less missed misunderstanding, better communication with the public and with your stakeholders. And then when you're also streamlining your court sessions, less option, less opportunity for missed court sessions. You have one site, you have one phone number, just, it just makes a lot of, makes communication much simpler for the public, which results in efficiencies and improved customer service all our time. So court, the court, consolidated court facility, as we said, town court is, size-wise, is perfect for a consolidated court. There were some opportunities for reorganization of space that were recommended to the town for consideration. Again, we identified a number of grants, some of which are on pause with New York State right now, but that could really facilitate a very cost-effective way of getting some of these improvements made over time. So conceptually, it was, there, it, it is to use the same space that's used right now in the court to improve, to be able to add a conference room for client, for attorney-client conferences, that really doesn't exist, exist now. And that was really a very large identified request in need from the justice system. And to try to see if we could, through the process, be able, be able to also address store, record storage needs for, for the, for the court system. And finally, it is really to be able to take the opportunity to make those security enhancements that now we can do it once as a community rather than twice, and hopefully we can get some grant funds to support that. So examples of those security enhancements would be to have a separate mechanism or pathway for the judges to enter the courtroom from their offices, so they don't have to go through the courtroom, they don't have to go through the public hallways. And so that would be one, one target area we'd want to accomplish. Second is, we would want to have interlocking chairs, so that they, there's not a lot of movement, and then, and chairs can't be used to harm others. The, another recommendation made by the architect was to have a particular area identified for holding of people that the sheriff is bringing to court. And then finally, to be able to have ingress screening equipment, meaning magnetometer for anything for weapons detection at the front end of people coming into court. And I think the opportunity with having a consolidated court is that in order to perform ingress weapons checks, it really does take two security officers at any one time. Right now, the village has a security officer and the town, both have security officers. But if, now if you're consolidated, you can invest that, you can invest that, those dollars in having two at one time, which then enables you to have that ingress screening. And then finally, just general facility upgrades, heating and ventilation, lighting, et cetera. And so there are four grant opportunities that we, we identified. First one being the local government efficiency grant through the Department of State. Because you would be potentially consolidating your governance, it, it presents you with an opportunity for fairly large grant opportunity. And because there are two of you considering consolidation, you'd be eligible up to, up to $400,000, of which there would be a 10% local share. So you'd be get, there would be significant dollars, once the grant comes back into play, to put towards your improvements. And you could, you also have the Dutchess County Municipal Innovation Grant Program. We know that that is on hold this year as well, but would likely be coming back. There is an annual justice court assistance program, it's a smaller grant program, but it's available, and it could, it could be invested in some of the improvements that you'd like to make. And then finally, there's a local government records management improvement program, which you could use to address records, electronic record storage improvements that you'd like to make. And because this would be a consolidation project, you would be eligible for that. They have moved away from just doing single government projects to consolidation or shared service projects. So big picture on the fiscal. I'm, I'm going to just talk a little bit about the revenues, only because it becomes a confusing issue. The village takes in revenues and the town takes in revenues, not all of which you retain. A piece of those revenues go to, go back to New York State or shared between New York State and the county. So just keep in mind, when you hear folks talk about the revenues, some of those revenues were, are not locally retained. And to understand how the savings are coming about, they're coming about on the expenditure side. The revenues really don't change. And you know, we're not anticipating anything materially different happening on the revenue side because of your consolidation. If the enforcement activities are going to continue to happen, as big would happen. The savings is on the expenditure side because you're collapsing into one, one operation rather than two. So on the village side, right now, the village expenses are about $93,000, $93,800, and your revenues are about $50,000. That's what you had in your 2019, '20 budget, for a cost to your taxpayer of about $43,800. And the town of Rhinebeck, similarly, had a, had a cost of about $13,900 to their tax pay. So what happens in the new system is, the village saves 45, over $45,000, because you lose your expenses that were greater than your revenues, so you gain. The town does have a slight increase because the revenues that would be coming over to the town from the village are slightly less than the cost that we would anticipate in the consolidated model. However, all, your greater community is saving over $26,000 a year. So at, at the end of the day, we see, we see a possibility of creating that one-stop-shop, a place where it's one court with, that's streamlined in terms of expenditures, revenues, that makes sense to the public, because it's a one-stop-shop, it's good for your stakeholders, and, and it also results in cost savings to the overall community.
Thank you, Kathleen. Okay. Shouldn't ask the questions, but first, Judge Kane is here and would like to have a few
Thank you for asking me here this evening. It's, I read the thorough report from Ms. Bruni's firm, and I can echo the details, but the import of what I'm about to say is hopefully some practicalities that would help you folks decide. They involve jurisdiction or administration is, the courts are very territorial, and the time and the location of where to have a court is, the village court is only in the village, barring some exceptions. This, of course, would expand to the town, so that the police officers and the other law enforcement officers would have a better handle on things, which are, which are technically in the village or town. That's, that could go long, you think that's a short thing, but it goes a long way towards clerk time. The other thing I want to mention, and it's on the chart, is the, in one town-built court building, then, which the court clerks will be there one at least every day, because right now, one, it's not filled all the time, at least in the town. And the practicality is that litigants, attorneys, district attorneys, they have to be available to call the clerks. The clerks are very efficient, but it's, it's much better, makes more common sense to have it in one location. And this, I should mention that a lot of people have private attorneys and a lot of people have public defenders. We want to make sure that, that the people who have public defenders need, need counsel. And oftentimes, they try to meet in the kipsey, that's hard for a lot of people, but if you have an extra conference room, I just want to point that out. That's a very, it doesn't have to be big, but that's a very important component of any location, because the public defenders have, have a very good time, reasonable time to talk with their clients, otherwise they're not rushed through, "I've got to go from the village court for the town court." I think that's very helpful, that people's rights would be honored. And it's not, and the details of doing that is have some place to talk to your lawyer privately. Actually, there is none now, so I think that would be healthy. As far as the police, I've been asked about the police component, and they're right across the street, so I understand that the police, it won't be any change for them. So that's always helpful. As far as just having one court, it's been touched upon to have one court, so in Rhinebeck, we know where, if you have a court in Rhinebeck, that's it. You don't have to go back and forth. I can assure you that people call and the clerk's time is spread between, well, where is that ticket? This might, very basic, where would that ticket issued? And where was the charge made? That, that is very helpful to have it in one location. So I just want to emphasize and give them some practical, when the, if warranted, when the sheriffs bring a prisoner or prisoner up, if there, if there have been, if there are any, then the court in, in between the village now and the town's at least an hour to an hour and a half just different. So they have to bring them up and then wait for a while. If they bring them up for one court, that could be targeted again with a public defender, not to speed things along, but to just actually help things and have more time. So as a practical matter, it really helps to have it in one location. I defer to all the details that Ms. Bruni's firm has put in, but I think, on the whole, it's very helpful to have it in one location. And with the, both, both, the town court can handle, manage, if you will, all the information. So that's what I have to say, as far as a serving justice practicality.
Thank you, Judge. As Kathleen mentioned, the town board had this on our agenda last Monday night and voted unanimously to consolidate the courts as well. And with us tonight is town supervisor Elizabeth Spenzia and councilman Chauncey Walker. Is, do either of you have anything you want to add?
No, I think it's all been laid out really clearly. We're happy to post if you guys decide that you want to.
I'll just add that I'm an enthusiastic supporter of the plan. I think it's a great idea, and we really need to go and we'll be glad with it.
All right, so now I'd like to open it up for the board, you know, for questions. Since we have the experts here, the board.
May I have a couple of questions?
Yeah.
I think my presentation might have been a little bit, I'm also sorry to interrupt you, but I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. So with regard to the capital freedom, the point forward to the plan, intention of moving capital freedom cabinet, and maybe to say, if I notice that the actual consolidation or the solution occurred and scheduled to be effective March 31st, '21.
The consolidation can move forward with the facility as it exists. The town court is currently functioning, two sessions, it has this court staff space that's envisioned for consolidation. So it can happen, and those will with, continue over time. And we're hoping that some of the grant opportunities you talked about, we're really getting some of that work accomplished.
So you saw no, you saw no downside?
No.
Moving ahead with the physical consolidation before the architecture change is permitted?
Correct. We did, we did talk with both the town and Judge Kane about that, and they, they felt that it was doable.
Okay. So another question concerning the finances. So you showed a net improvement in the finances of, of the village, but also a slight increase in the town. Does the increase in the town reflect any debt service that might be incurred or potential debt service if the grants are not allowed?
No, no, it's not.
Okay.
Many of the, many of the improvements are just as, or improvements.
Sure.
There are opportunities that should, should the town want to proceed with them, they would be happening whether at your facility or.
So that's a very important point, because I think, you know, the improvements are certainly justified, the way you presented. the way you presented them, and I'd like to see that we don't have a voice in that. But we want to make sure that the process could, you know, move ahead efficiently and that all the numbers were at least out there, and of course, that's the town's responsibility. Thank you.
So that was my biggest question was the improvements. Now, you're saying that none of them are really necessary, I mean, to do this. None of them or a portion of them?
No, the court improvements are there as a roadmap for the justice system. That there's currently ample space in the courtroom, there is the support staff space currently available. The improvements primarily around court security, records, storage are all issues that can enhance and improve the systems. But starting the court is not contingent on having those operations.
Okay, so, and also, I wouldn't set the courts up the way they are today if we started from scratch. I mean, I think that's kind of probably obvious, but having said that, my first guess would be that the, that the labor costs would be the savings. And that's, it's kind of, what boils down to is your big savings are going to be these three clerks.
Well, you're going to also end up with basically about the same full-time equivalent, which you may not have to have some coverage for, because you now have a consolidated court, you have two full-time people that can cover for each other during the day and then evening.
Right, but do we have a clerk that's going to get laid off necessarily from this exercise?
There's about two full-time equivalent.
We have three clerks.
Clerks now.
We have one. We have one, and there's two part-timers.
I'm talking about total. There's two part-timers, you said one hundred and fifteen percent of one person across the street, and then we have one. So, all right, there's two point one five clerks, but somebody's going to get laid off.
Or absorbed into our rankings some other way.
Well, but is anyone, because this is about people, and, you know, I mean, to save twenty-six thousand dollars a year, you know, this isn't an accounting exercise to me. I mean, it sounds like the whole thing is contingent on laying somebody off. And I just don't know, are one of these clerks volunteering to, are they about ready to retire, or are they going to move on, or? We don't know this.
These are, well, these are.
These are people, these are people with jobs.
First of all, some of these are town issues, not ours.
Thanks, Rick. One point one five is town, and then, yeah, and one is us.
But the idea is that it's going to be up to the town to figure out how to most efficiently administer their court.
But we may lay out our own clerk here. We don't know.
It's not so likely.
Or our clerk could be absorbed by the town.
By the town.
But nobody's, nobody's explored that with the people, with the three employees.
They do believe that there is an opportunity for potential absorption at the town. That was, that was part of the discussion.
Okay, I would need to explore that further.
You know, I think one of the things that we're talking about here is that New York State does indeed have a series of guidelines for courtrooms. In terms of security, Kathleen mentioned the exiting and entering the judges, the magnetometer, the chairs that can't be thrown. Basically, our village court is trying to meet some of those, none of those guidelines. And to bring them, to bring the village up to speed on that, something was discussed a while ago, looks like a pretty expensive and time-consuming process. I think one of the other things we're talking about here is overall government efficiency. What we're trying to talk about is how to deliver a better service to the people who come to use our government facilities. Even if you're a plaintiff in the court, you can sort of, you know, have an easy and effective and efficient experience. And it's really clear right now that that is not the case, between having two courts and the confusion that it, that it creates. I think the other parts, as Kathleen mentioned, we have records management issues that need to be addressed. This is really a chance to provide much better services to our constituents. And to do it, actually, the savings, at least to the village, of forty-five thousand dollars. So while I appreciate your, you know, your feeling about it, this seems like a chance to really improve our governmental administration and save some money.
So. I want to.
Wait, I want to, I want to answer his question first, or his comment. Are we, is the town really going to allow all the savings to go to the village? I mean, or are they going to want an intermunicipal agreement to share this?
We don't, it's a town court.
It's a consolidated court. There is no IMA.
Well, there could be if they ask for one.
Do we have to pay, is the village expected to chip in on any of the improvements?
No, this is, it will be a town expense. Your old town residents as well, village residents or town residents.
No, we understand that, but we're also here to, we're also here to look out for the village budget and the village, village's interest.
Can you take one of the mics, just come up so people can hear you?
As likely assessed for you and we record all your vital statistics, we will be providing a court service for you. It will be within our tax levy, and all village residents are town residents. For us, it's about a better delivery of service, that there's savings for us as ancillary. It's not effective. It's one big interruption for our town clerks right now, for people looking for court clerks when the court office in town is not open full-time. This will give people a full-time court office. It will save our clerks' time, it will give people coming to court better attention. Court clerks won't have to write two sets of reports, they'll write one set of report. The efficiencies go on and on and on. And as you know, my record as a town supervisor, I've created more jobs and I've set a high part-time wage. So we are pro-labor, pro-jobs, and pro-full-time jobs. Our intent is to absorb people within, within the town.
It's also our obligation to deliver services at the most cost-effective way, right? So to our taxpayers, are you going to make, to our taxpayers, we deserve his obligation?
I just don't think what the study is describing, a dysfunctional system. We understand there's court confusion, we're all downstairs and we're having a meeting, and people say, oh, you know, are you in court tonight? No, it's over the town, and there's, you know. I don't think that that, it may be affecting Elizabeth's government more than ours, this, but I don't see that our court is, you know, truly dysfunctional. They could see some efficiencies and improvement.
I, Brad, I also want to say, I really appreciate the point about people losing their jobs, and thank you for considering that. But I think the alternative with the status quo is just not up to par when it comes to security. And as the judge mentioned, having a space for the lawyer, especially a public defender, having enough time and space to talk in private with her client, I think is a really, really important.
Right, but that's also, that's part of, one of the improvement items, right? One of the items that's going to cost money and that doesn't exist right now, right? So, I mean, I'm from Chicago, we didn't really always have side rooms for people, but, you know, I understand it's optimal, but.
And if we were to continue with court here, we need to make changes.
Well, but. Right, I mean, we don't have three seats tethered together, but.
No, we don't have that.
Our insurance company wanted that, whatever, but.
We need to make changes to continue the court.
A lot more changes can be made on the town side if this goes through, and, again, I just want to make sure that there's. That's not going to affect, I mean, the savings is coming from our village budget, and there's not going to be an IMA that.
No IMA.
Okay.
I do, I mean, if we go forward and we do adopt a resolution, we need to work out through the resolution how the costs are managed, right, in, you know, in terms of the tickets and everything else, which is all included into the, all included into that resolution.
Well, I know what I would ask for, power on the town government is I would ask for.
And the timeline even to make this, just, back to the comment of a timeline. To do a consolidated court today, let's just assume it were to go through, it's not going to happen tomorrow, is my point, right? It's going to take time to get the process, procedures, space, everything else in place.
The timing would happen with the chairman of the village justice court, which is March thirty-first, twenty-one. So you have that period of time to work out the transition.
Right.
In the report, there was actually a timeline, that was one of my questions, is that the timeline started in May, June, and then on the timeline, it had us making this decision, I think, in July. So it seems like we're a little bit behind schedule. Is there still a way to meet that March deadline?
Yes, absolutely. And I think that's, I think when COVID interrupted processes, we were looking to see what was going to happen to the grant opportunities and the timing. None of those grant opportunities have ended, they've put a stay on them, so we were looking to see how well that fits. So with those happening, we went and talked with Judge Kane, we talked with the town supervisor, and the town council member, Chauncey, to see, could we, could we make the three, the four-one, two thousand twenty-one timeline, even though we may not be able to get all of the changes put in place? And the answer was yes. If your court functions fine as it is right now, that there's court bench, there's court offices, that there is a way that we can make that work, while we hope to get additional funds to make some of the larger improvements. And I think that some of those improvements will begin to happen on a long term.
I think it's important to reiterate, you know, what's really going on here. It's really an assessment of the qualitative merits, for better or for worse, of this consolidation. You know, if the numbers are slightly different, you know, costs is more, would we still do it? And I think emphatically, in my opinion, the answer is yes, okay? The arguments, operationally, administratively, from the standpoint of public service slash customer service are overwhelming. And the fact that it just so happens to turn out to be a saving, you know, it's nice. But if there were a cost, I would still be in favor of it, because I think the arguments are there on those other, by those other measures. And I didn't want anyone to interpret my questions about the capital costs as anything other than a planning type of thing, to make sure that we can execute on that, but, and with regard, I think it's great to hear that, you know, the town has spoken up and has a very positive position about, let's say, being very nurturing with regard to its employees, and is certainly sensitive to the labor needs and needs for jobs, so I'm not worried about that at all.
And I just also want to bring up, remind people that there is a public component here that you mentioned, correct?
Yeah.
If the board does approve, there is, there is a permissive referendum process.
Right, but for Ms., so my question is for Rich or maybe, you know, Kathleen, is, does this part of the permissive referendum, does it, does it trigger the citizen option to create a permissive referendum, or does it actually go to referendum immediately, or automatically?
It's permissive, meaning that it's going to be triggered by.
Right, that's what I thought, yeah. Can we change that? Can we, really?
It's in the village law. They have thirty days from the date of the adoption, assuming you adopt it, to have a petition filed with twenty percent of the signatures of registered voters of the village to challenge.
So does the timeline then for implementation, is that taken into account the impact of the transparency of law?
So to get back to the timeline, the permissive referendum, if it was voted on today, just for the public and anybody who's listening and hearing, if it was voted on today, the abolishment of court would go out effectively tomorrow, or it's thirty days from today.
Thirty days from today, the adoption of the resolution could be challenged by petition of the voters of the village of Rhinebeck. If they had a petition in proper form, which is set forth in the statute, with twenty percent of the electors' signatures on it, they could then require you to have a permissive referendum, require you to have a referendum, which because of the timing coming in October, would require you to set a special election, not less than ten days, not more than sixty days from that final of the petition.
Thank you.
It's the same as when we have a bond for over five years, it triggers that permissive referendum.
Yeah, no, I just wanted it for everybody.
No, I know, I was just saying that for the other people.
Any other discussion?
I think for some people, there's a sort of an emotional reaction, "Oh my God, we're getting rid of something," and that. But I think the reality is that we would see much better services provided to essentially stakeholders, who are people who are at the court. We'll see better services for our justices, but clerks will have a better time. And the, as Kathleen will say, the amount of time that they spend redirecting people is not insignificant. And as somebody who's gotten a speeding ticket and driven up to the long court, an hour away, to find out that I went to the village court and not the town court, is a non-trivial problem. And if we can do something about that to make that, help people have a better time accessing their government and a better time at the courts, I think we should really do it. I think we should really, we should really look at it and do it. I think some of the issues are from the village, it looks like we would be saving about forty-five thousand dollars a year, which is significant money, significant money for us. It sounds like on the town level, and we will be paying our town at the town level, the courts can be, the two courts can be merged, and then the physical improvements made as grant money and our work. This is in a package that the consolidation of the court is not dependent upon having to do the physical work over.
That's what, yeah.
Over at the town, but it does in terms of people going to look for grant, right? We've learned over time that state and county looks very favorably on grants that help people streamline and make government more efficient.
Right, but you know the grant environment right now is.
No, it's bad, it's bad, yeah. It's grant, but, and it is, right, so it may be a year or two or three before that comes back. But, you know, it'll be there, and people are going to continue to push for efficiencies. So I am at least in favor of this. I do understand that there's kind of an emotional sense of loss that goes with it, but in terms of the services rendered and the ways the, the potential to improve our, the court, the town court, I think it's very significant, very significant underdog.
Listen, nobody loses their job.
But we don't know that, but you're Gary, that's.
But we save money, we provide better services.
Yeah, but we can condition, we can condition the vote on nobody losing their job.
Yeah, so.
But you guys won't agree to that, so.
I don't think you can. Towns.
It's on the town. We can't vote on it.
All right, and the other thing is, the other wrinkle on this is that these Facebook meetings are, they're not adequate for public participation.
This is not a public hearing.
And I hate doing, this, I didn't say, this is a public meeting, Gary, that also requires public participation. People have the right to petition their government, they have the right to speak, and this is, I don't want to make big moves when people can't even participate in a meeting.
I believe we have one comment in, right? So we have, we had one email come in to the media, right, which will be entered into the record. And whatever Facebook posts are out there are entered into the record as well.
People can't talk in our meetings. That's not going away. I'm going to bring this up all the time, okay?
That's fine.
Okay, and you guys keep ignoring it?
Okay. Any other discussion?
We get pinged by the public constantly on this, and we're not even considering it.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to read into the record, the village of Rhinebeck resolution abolishing the office of village court. "The Village of Rhinebeck Resolution Abolishing the Office of Village Court." Whereas pursuant to Article 3, 301, 2A of village law of the state of New York, the Board of Trustees of any village by resolution subject to permissive referendum may abolish the office of village justice to take effect upon expiration of the current term of such office. And whereas, the Board of Trustees has investigated the effectiveness and has considered the financial prudence of abolishing said office and those resulted from the town justices assuming the functions previously performed by the village justice. And whereas, the Board of Trustees finds that the need of the village for the prosecution of violations under the village code can be handled effectively by the town court. Now therefore be it resolved that the office of village justice be, and the same hereby is abolished upon expiration of the current term ending March 31st, 2021, subject to the village of Rhinebeck and the town of Rhinebeck entering into an intermissive agreement for the disposition of revenue generated by the office of the village justice, and for the maintenance of records and completion of repeating, of reporting requirements upon abolishment of the office. Said agreement to be approved by the respective boards of the village and town on or before the 30th day after the adoption of this resolution. And be it further resolved that this resolution is adopted subject to permissive referendum, and the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish and post notice of such adoption in accordance with law. And be it further resolved that this resolution will be in effect upon the date of the expiration of the period for the referendum, or upon referendum vote supporting abolition of the office of the village justice. We have to change the date on this, to September 21st, 2020. I'd like to make a motion to accept the abolition, the resolution for abolishing the office of village justice.
Seconded.
Discussion. I'm going to do a roll call vote, starting from my right, Trustee Courtak.
Aye.
Trustee Lewitt.
Aye.
Trustee Bertozzi.
Aye.
Trustee Nutterkern.
Aye.
Mayor Bassett, aye. Vote is passed by a record of, by a vote of four to one. Having said that, the notice of resolution, the notice of adoption of resolution, which I'll read in, which will be posted tomorrow, is, notice hereby is given that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rhinebeck, Dutchess County, State of New York, adopted at a meeting held on the 21st day of September 2020 at the Village Hall, 76 East Market Street, Rhinebeck, New York, a resolution abolishing the office of village justice effective upon expiration of the current term of that office on March 31st, 2021. Such resolution does not take effect until 30 days after its adoption or until approved by a affirmative vote of a majority of the electors of the village of Rhinebeck effective. Qualified to vote at the last annual election of the village voting on such proposition if, within 30 days after its adoption, there should be filed with the village clerk a petition signed and acknowledged in the manner required by such a 9-902 of the village law, protesting such resolution and requesting that it be submitted to the electors of such village for their approval or disapproval. Dated September 21st, 2020, and be submitted by village clerk Martina McLipton. Thank you all.
You know you've got to post and publish this.
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. Moving on, the next thing on our agenda is the Village of Rhinebeck Financial Review presentation by our treasurer Karen McLaughlin. Now Karen's getting set up. I'd like to note that this is our third year in a row where we publicly presented in a very graphical way how the village board has managed its budget and performed its financial responsibilities.
So still...
I'm not sure.
Sure.
I don't know, wait a second.
Okay. Good evening. My report is for the fiscal year ending May 31st, 2020. Where we were, where we are, and where we're going. The last where we're going will be the most difficult to determine. However, with careful analysis, forecasting, and planning, the future of the Village of Rhinebeck can be safe, productive, and exciting. We'll start off with the chart of revenues. This chart breaks down revenues showing the percentages in each category. This is particularly important to monitor in the coming year, as there may be a possible decrease in state-county aid. With the strong housing market, mortgage tax could increase. And with the town reassessment, reevaluation, there could be an increase in overall village assessment. So if you look at the light blue at the top, that's the mortgage tax state revenue and chips and grants, which is a little more of the uncertain area. And then if you look at the orange, that's our non-property tax distribution by the county. Next, our chart of expenses. The expenses are broken down by department, which includes its share of employee benefits. The department head monitors their budget and notifies the board of any large unforeseen purchases and/or any upcoming capital projects. This graph closely mirrors the budget as it was adopted. And I also commend the department heads because they do check in regularly, and they do monitor their budgets. So this does mirror the actual budget that was adopted. The board continues to review the process and manage expenses. At the fiscal year ending May 31st, 2020, fund balances were as follows. In the general fund, $669,246. $60,487 is above the fund balance policy recommendation of 25% of the subsequent year's budget. The water fund, $612,495. And the sewer fund, $773,911. It is important, it's very important to note that fund balance is a net position and takes into account cash, receivables, payables, due-to-do forms, pending grants, and transfers to capital projects. Maintaining a healthy fund balance is an ongoing challenge with the 2% tax cap, which this coming year, for our, going into our 2021 budget, will be decreased to 1.56%. Also, union negotiations and increasing cost of supplies, equipment, and services make budgeting challenging every year. The chart of fund balance. In addition to tracking the revenue and expenses, we monitor fund balance trends. This chart shows a decrease in the general fund fund balance as the completion of approved projects is accounted for. There are no real guidelines from New York Comptroller's Office about fund balance percentage-wise, because a large municipality would probably be okay with a 2% fund balance. But us, with our small budget, that would not be enough for a major repair or response to a crisis. The water and sewer funds also have a healthy fund balance. And this is good, and this is very important, because unforeseen repairs and replacements to these facilities and collection systems can be very costly. They too have decreased because of completion of much-needed repairs and projects that have been done in the past year. So this year, the board authorized to utilize fund balance, the general fund fund balance, for the following, for the purposes that are listed, listed right down the middle, and they total $174,772. So fund balance is calculated by taking the prior-year fund balance less any assigned fund balance, the year-to-date revenues, and deducting the year-to-date expenditures. So the three fund balances for the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund, are approximate at this time, as I'm still closing out the end of the fiscal year, which will be done this week, but they're probably very close to what they will be. We cannot talk about the finances without talking about COVID-19. It has impacted every aspect of our lives. Prior to March 2020, we were enjoying a yield of interest earnings of 1.49% compared to the current earnings of near zero. While the Fed has lowered its target rate, a local government investment pool remains a competitive option. We use New York Class, which is New York Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System, as part of our investment policy, which is still yielding a positive return. .09 was this past month. So these balances are included in the annual calculation of fund balance. So the chart of capital accounts. Part of the overall financial health of the village has been to maintain capital reserve accounts. We have one for fire, highway, police, for the office, parking, parks and rec, and sidewalks. To purchase or spend from these accounts requires a separate purchase board resolution. And you can see, you can see the years that they have been purchased out of. You can see the office doesn't really move, because we haven't really used any out of there. And parking has pretty much stayed the same for the last three years. Shared services. The village has taken an aggressive approach to explore opportunities for shared services by conducting reviews for, as you just heard, the consolidation of the town and village courts, and the same study for the highway. A shared service, a shared service study has just been completed for the water and wastewater facilities. Additionally, the village has received grants for the Village Hall ADA lift, tree inventory, expansion of the historic district, and two electric vehicle charging stations. A major water line upgrade has recently been completed with additional improvements done to Livingston, Chestnut, Platt, Mulberry Streets, and parts of Route 9. A grant from the New York State Environmental Facilities Corps was received in the amount of $2,228,276. The EFC and Village of short-term borrowing totaled $3,029,488. An additional bond anticipation note was secured for $450,000 for the general fund highway portion. In October, this will be converted into long-term debt. In both the water fund and the general fund, there were bonds that matured, allowing the planned payment for these new obligations. The completed project has resulted in no increase of users' fees. The village, to date, has spent $11,802 for COVID-related expenses. The majority have been for ambulance, fire, and police. There have also been costs to comply with Governor Cuomo's executive orders with regards to outdoor dining and assisting local businesses. The village hall had to restructure the working environment to create social distancing and maintain a safe place for employees to work. Offices were divided and employees separated to accommodate this. There were costs for retrofitting office space, IT upgrades, for creating virtual conferencing and meeting, holding meetings. To assist residents during this tumultuous time, the mayor acted quickly to work with the county and the state to offer residents the ability to split their tax bills into two payments without additional penalty, and many benefited from this offer. The village board also voted to defer penalty fees on late water and sewer bills, which for many families has been a big help. We've been keeping these costs separate, and we will work with FEMA to recoup the cost of these expenses. Many unplanned resources were required to address COVID-19 in the Village of Rhinebeck, as well as support the many local businesses. So, looking ahead. It's difficult to know how the COVID-19 pandemic, how long it will last, or its impact to local, state, and national funding. We are in a time of financial insecurity. What we do know is that we, the village, has maintained an adequate fund balance and reserves. We continue to keep expenses down and budget conservatively. And we are always looking for safe, viable sources of revenue that in turn stabilizes the village tax rate, keeping it under the new 1.56% tax cap. Our goal is to stay under the New York State tax cap and keep our tax levy consistent.
Well done, thank you, Karen. Any questions for Karen? I think you nailed it.
Thank you.
The timeline agenda is an update on our police reform. So everybody knows, the governor issued an executive order 203 on August 17th of 2020. In this executive order, Governor Cuomo announced an executive order requiring local police agencies, in conjunction with the chief executive officer in the local government and with input from stakeholders, to engage in a public and open process to develop a plan that will promote policing and provides for equal treatment and protection of civil rights for all. Such plan would need to adjust to the following. The use of force by police officers, crowd management, community policing, implicit bias awareness training, de-escalation training and practices, community-based outreach, and transparent citizen complaint disposition procedure. And the local government body must adopt a plan by local law or resolution no later than April 1st of 2021, in order for the police agency to be eligible for future state funding. We have been working diligently with the county. The county came up with a plan to work with all of the municipalities within Dutchess County that have police agencies. And what so far the county has done is they are providing with, providing us with guidance and assistance on reviewing the items I mentioned above. They have also formed community-wide work groups, which nominated to that committee automatically was myself as CEO, Mayor, Village of Rhinebeck, Officer in Charge Sergeant Dunn, and Deputy Mayor Richard Lewitt. They are holding meetings every other week, which we review policies that they review at their level and give us feedback and information. We have given them our use-of-force policy, and we are currently waiting for feedback from the county on that review of that policy that we can then get back out. And there are scheduled community forums, which occurred earlier in the meeting by Legislative Brendan Kearney, and we have one coming up on September 26th. The hours are not as convenient. There is from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, September 26th. But please go, we have posted it on our, on all our media. I would encourage everybody to sign up and register for this conference. And as I mentioned before, you don't have to sign up for just the one for our area, which includes Rhinebeck, Red Hook, and Mylan, and Pine Plains. You can sign up for anyone or all of them. Here in the Village of Rhinebeck, we are participating very aggressively in all the meetings held by the county. meetings held by the county, offering our input and suggestions to their process throughout the duration of the meetings. We are also working diligently to work on a schedule for the development of that process with the county. We have formed, we also, at the recommendation of the governor, formed a stakeholder group, which is made up of currently nine people, and we now have youth members, or young adult members, I don't want to call them youth, we have young adults now participating in this forum with us. This working group is to determine our, to work with us on our local priorities and make certain that the proposed changes align with our, align with policies and procedures tailored to meet the village of Rhinebeck. And I want to emphasize that these, we are working with the village of Rhinebeck. We meet every other week. We review the current village police policies and procedures, and so far to date, we have reviewed the following: we have talked about trust and legitimacy, we have, we've talked about community engagement, use of force, and our complaint process. So to go along with that, we've developed a plan that we will be reviewing at this upcoming meeting this week on Wednesday with the stakeholder group to get us towards our 4-1-21 deadline. Right? This is a very aggressive undertaking. I don't want to let anybody think that this is something that is going to happen automatically. The three of us, myself, Sergeant Dunn, and, and Rick Lewitt, are working diligently with our public and with our community stakeholders to get information and feedback. This has to go to a resolution, and we will have public hearings, and we have community input, public hearings, prior to having a vote on this resolution before April 1st. I don't, I would be remiss to say, if it's not the schedule, if we have not pleaded to the governor, and I'm going to plead here publicly to the governor, to give us more time, to do something this involved for the village of Rhinebeck, which does not have a large police force. We have 15 officers, all working part-time, and one village clerk, and the rest of us who are working as hard as we possibly can to get this done by April 1st is, is very aggressive. And we are making a plea to the governor to work with us on that as long as we are practicing and working hard to get that accomplished. That's my report. Any questions?
Question?
Sure.
Is there a way for the public to be able to see who is on the community stakeholder committee?
I'm sorry, didn't, to do what?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Is there a way for the public to see who is on the community stakeholder committee for the village?
Some of the, some of the, some of the stakeholders have asked that their names not be publicized at this time, until they get further into the process and feel more comfortable. So I'm respecting that, and I'm respecting that to, when the time comes, I think we will all work together and we'll all be out there with it. But for right now, I do respect their.
And how are these corrected?
So we worked through, reaching out to, through Lewitt, myself, Sergeant Dunn, and we went out to other people who worked with other people who worked with other people to bring names in. And I also went out to the board and asked board for, for recommendation of names as well.
But you started recruiting people before we knew about this.
That's correct, because we are on an aggressive schedule. You're absolutely correct.
Let's not do it that way any, anymore. I've never, I've been here for eight years, I've never seen a committee or a commission formed by the action of one board member, or two. I, I just implore you to do that.
I wish we had more time, and I would agree with you.
Okay.
And I wish there was more time.
Thank you.
So I, I also want to suggest that, that this is a longer process, and there will be a larger public input process.
No, we understand that, but.
That this is leading to, that's very important, because this is basically, there's a lot of technical, of policy that we're looking for, that we're looking for.
So could.
And then the idea of grants, and then the idea is that, that information and ideas and such, and also additional input from the public will be coming to us hopefully this winter, that's a big part.
We understand that, and then it comes to us for approval. So do you think that the, the committee was appropriately formed by just you and Gary doing it yourself?
I think we worked really hard to.
I know, but.
To grant, to, to reach out to people. There was a pretty clear directive in the, in the governor's order that we're supposed to reach out to people who would generally be underserved, not, not heard from stakeholders, that is, to really reach out and try to get to those people. And we tried to put together as many community contacts.
So respectfully.
Grant, through as many community groups as we could. So yes, I do feel, well, we got an incredibly tight deadline to do this. I do feel comfortable that in a relatively small village, we tapped about everybody we could get our hands on.
Okay, I think respectfully, you didn't have the authority to create that commission.
It's not a commission, it's a work group.
Commit, I don't care. Work group, commission, committee, whatever you want to call it. Steering committee?
Okay. Thank you. Next, outdoor dining permit extension. Our current permit for outdoor dining in the village of Rhinebeck expires on October 15th. We have had significant input from not only businesses, but from the public, and I'm not sure about the Jewish trustees have received input or not, on terms of wanting to extend our current setup, which we have on East Market Street and in other places, through a longer period of time. To do that is not just, we can't do it without getting help, bottom line. Number one, we needed permission from the state DOT to advance our existing permit. I reached out to the state DOT and asked them for an extension, and the extension was granted to November 30th of this year. We all recognize that if snow falls, or if we get an early snowstorm, that that may change that date. But the DOT has given us permission to continue doing what we're doing on the state roads with the barriers. The second is actually then the use of the barriers, right? These barriers are borrowed from the county and from the fairground, and barriers that would be the village of Rhinebeck app. Predominantly, most of them are from the county. I reached out to the county and asked, can we keep the barriers? Do you have any other need for them? They have granted us an extension on the barriers until November 30th. The third thing that is required, as I suggested, is input from our people who we are serving. And now, not all have agreed, but most have agreed to want to extend this to November 30th, or until as long as possible through this period of time. So with that, I would like to make a motion to extend what we have currently adopted for our village laws and to permission, permission of using outdoor dining to November 30th.
Second motion.
Discussion.
So I'm a little concerned, I think, pretty soon, if they're not doing so already, people are going to start bringing those propane heaters out there.
Yeah.
Now that they're closer to the trucks that are going by, and, you know, everything's compressed now, so.
So we have brought, so far, we, two weeks ago, we started addressing that. We have brought in our fire inspector to go to every business, give them the current codes, and he did make an inspection, so good suggestion. We started that process two weeks ago in anticipation of having those additional heaters come out. And we're working with all the restaurants to be in compliance.
Good.
Um, you're, maybe you, maybe you already covered this, but if it does snow in November, as it sometimes snows with Thanksgiving and everyone's up, will those barriers have to be removed?
Yeah. If we get, the county has said if we get advanced notice, they can come up and remove them today. So in anticipation of a major storm, I would pull that trigger and work with the county to have them come up, because they have the equipment, they set them in place for us, and they have the only equipment that can lift those 20-footers. The smaller ones we can handle, but the 20-footers, we have to go, we have to get help from the county to do.
We could probably push a small storm, right? Through there?
I'm sorry.
Do you think if it's a small storm, we could probably push it?
Yeah. Right. And we want to avoid using salt though to melt the smell. All right. Any other question?
Just a comment, sounding like a broken record, but I, I do think that, you know, the comments that I've gotten back informally from restaurateurs and others is that the overall experience has been a positive one, and the main concern is from restaurants, in particular, is whether or not there's going to be a continuation in the future. And my suggestion would be that the board consider somehow polling, formally polling all the parties involved and actually listening to what the impact has been on their business, get some suggestions early, because quite honestly, you know, there's been a lot of positive comments, there's been some negative comments, and a sense of fairness in the use of the streets and so forth, but, you know, the restaurants survived because of the action we took. And I think that in the long run, the restaurants may need, you know, long-term help in terms of a recurring type of structure where they could use the streets in a, in a positive way. That's, you know, what I've heard generally speaking. It's a complex subject, but I think we should get the input directly now and let, you know, let that information percolate in. Right now, the restaurants seem to be hesitant because they'd like to know what the plan is, so that they can look forward to next year in terms of actually making the accommodations there more permanent, much more visually appealing, and consistent with the character of the village. But they're not going to invest unless we take the lead in terms of defining what our plans would be. So I'd suggest that we start thinking about that, and certainly before the period of the extension of the permit ends or shortly thereafter, we take some sort of formal polling or have a hearing to just learn firsthand and formally what the residents and the business owners feel the results were.
And I agree. And I thought would, the next step after we get through the November, if we and the board agrees, is to form a task force.
Yeah.
That task force can be made up of several people who I know already have come and said they wanted to participate, whether they are businesses or publicly. And in that task force, to be able to address what we do. Because I believe if we do this next year, it's going to be done differently. You know, this year, we really tried to do something that costs effectively to help our businesses. Next year, you know, it's a, as we discussed when we adopted this, we changed a lot of, we suspended a lot of laws to make this happen. And I think we have to go back and look at those laws and determine what is the right thing to do. And then, if this is going to be something we want to do permanently, or not permanently, or temporarily, or what duration, right? But next year, I think it's, it requires a really deep dive by a group of people.
Right, exactly.
To do. So I would honestly be, I would very much be in favor.
And I think an important aspect of that task force's responsibility is really to coordinate with the state and actually to look a little bit beyond the village, to see what other villages have done and how they're handling it. Because I think there needs to be a sense of cooperation with the state in terms of some of the rules and regulations governing the use of the restaurant space, things that are beyond our purview.
I participated in a Capital Region webinar on this exact subject. That involved many, several municipalities in the city, Albany as well as part of that. We have done, they have done, in sometimes a little bit different fashion, but to the same degree. And they are also talking about doing exactly what we just talked about. They are all working on extending the process for as long as possible to support their local businesses, and they are also all looking into next year. And that was the Capital Region, that's the only one that I participated in.
And just one other small suggestion, since, you know, there is an environmental impact to what we're doing in terms of possibly reducing some of the vehicular traffic and encouraging people to walk and bike. So I'm going to look to Vanessa to, you know, keep that in mind and the positive effect that that can have on the village.
Yeah, good point. All right.
Is there an opportunity, though, for, for restaurants who are thinking, gee, I, I'm not going to be able to have a tent outside, or the heat lamp thing, I don't want to do that, so I don't anticipate having a lot of outdoor dining? Would they be able to have the barriers removed at this point?
I think, look, I think that's part of the planning process. I mean, heat lamps are a common occurrence. They're not common here, and we haven't really thought that through, through, but they happen everywhere. It's just a question of understanding, you know, the issues, taking all the safety precautions, which we must do. And, you know, the restaurants that I spoke with, not a whole bunch, but they said, look, we want a sense of permanence to our, to our permission, and we'll reflect sense of permanence in the permission with our investment in the necessary infrastructure. I've never heard anybody say that we won't do the right thing, quote unquote, as it's defined by the village. It's just a question of, well, do we have some certainty that the investment will pay off over long term?
So, yeah, and I can answer your, I can answer your question.
Okay.
Because your question is, can we remove some barriers now?
Yeah.
Right, that's really, that's, that's your question. And so between the Rhinebeck Chamber, Carolyn Burnett, Josh Croner, who represents, had a broad reach to the restaurants, and myself, we surveyed the businesses, and except for two, all the businesses that have the barriers in front of them want to keep them. And the only reason we can't where those, where those two are is for safety reasons, and which is why we put them in before, because you don't want to start mixing pedestrian and parking in with.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so we're stuck, we have, with what we have for a good reason, for safety, and at the recommendation of our fire and our police departments for doing this. So I made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other question? All right. All in favor? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, what's that date again? Until what date?
November 30th. The DOT has given us the extension to November 30th. The county has given an extension to November 30th, right? And the SLA is participating and being cooperative as well for, for these extensions for us. It's up to, it's up to us. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. A lot of people will be happy to hear this. All right, department reports. Moving quickly.
All right, so the treasurer's report is for the period ending August 31st. Since the balances are posted, I will read the balances, but I will ask the board for a resolution to authorize vouchers to be paid in the general fund, totaling $157,908.86. In the water fund, $43,829.7. In the sewer fund, totaling $37,076.05. And the water main project, $379,185.15. And the landscaping, the capital project water for the landscaping of $63. The monthly and operating statement has been provided with revenue and expenditures through September 21st. The water and wastewater billing and adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the Water and Wastewater Department Liaison and are presented for authorization.
So I've moved that we approve the adjustments as presented for both water and wastewater.
Streamless. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie.
Okay. And lastly, I just have a few budget amendments. One is just to allocate the $9,920 from the capital parks to, for the Crystal Lake ADA walkway repair. And the other one is to request from contingency to records management $1,064 for the Laserfish annual maintenance fee that we did not know, but we'll make sure we budget that next year.
I like your motion to accept the budget amendments. After that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
That's it.
Thank you. Police report. Total, total number of incidents in the town, 30. Total number of incidents in the village is 102. Total number of tickets in the town is six. Total number of tickets in the village, 41. Arrests were three, accidents were five, and our police continues to do extra work with traffic control for a ribbon-cut ceremony by the chamber, brush pickup, and the grant that they have that funds patrols to enforce speed, self-loan use, and distracted driver during, during this last. Building, highlight, building planning zoning, excuse me.
For the month of August 2020, we collected a grand total of $9,550 in fees, 14 actions on the part of the building department for certificates of occupancy and municipal searches, building permits totaled $8,575. Planning board administrative actions generated fees totaling $975, again for the grand total of $9,550. of $9,550.
Thank you. Highway.
The highway department, to be brief, has been up to their usual outmowing and cleaning. I do want to highlight that we had a chance with Scott Mid, member of the highway department, John Fenton, myself, and the head of our tree commission walked through both the Legion Park and the Lyons Park, and we had a discussion about how to properly treat, how to properly trim the trees, how to open up some views, bank stabilization by the water. So we will be making a much more conservative effort to do a generalized cleanup and maintenance of both of our park spaces. It's going to take a while to get all of the, all the stuff done, but we have started it, and I hope that people will see and enjoy the changes.
Very good.
I want to add a question. There's like a tractor playing place on South Street. Was that under your peruse or?
No. The tractor that was in the road in South Street? That's put in by the county. The county, every year, puts out a list of roads that they want to do a highway count on, and that, and so I think we had one on, we had two out, one on South Street, and I think the other one was on Mulberry, but I forget. I'm not quite sure. But they're, they're put in by the county. We will get a report in about six months of traffic volume from that. Water and wastewater. Can I combine them?
Yeah, let's, sure. So water, we, they drained and cleaned one of the settlement tanks and then the flock tank. So we put baffles in the flock tank, oh, they did it themselves, Brian and Alan and Justin, to create, you know, a water maze so we can improve the contact time. So we, we're trying to come up with some remedies for, to have better measures with the disinfectant byproducts. The landscaping has been ordered by the company, Red Cedar. The landscaping price for the, to do the landscaping around the water tank, it's going to be beautiful, is, was $65,350. $30,000 of that was just from materials, so from the, from the growies. So didn't realize it was going to be that expensive, but it is underway. The Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority analysis, the phase one was done to do the report, basically the fitness of both the water facility.
Charged.
And the wastewater facility. The legal analysis has been complete. Rich came in and went through a box of all the easements and said that Bob Winnie was very thorough in getting all the private, private rights of access wherever we have water lines over private property years and years ago. So is that it for water? I don't think I have anything to purchase. Wastewater, we, you know, I'm just jumping in. They did, remember we approved the camera for the root infest, the root, it looks like they did the entire water main or wastewater main, like the whole, the main part already, and there were some trouble spots. That's going to come out, we're going to submit that to the water and wastewater analysis with Delaware Engineering. I had given you a couple of, three bids on the floor tiling. This is when you, in the wastewater building, when you walk in, it's the heavily trafficked area. It's been the same floor tile since 1984, I think, and it's really getting worn and in spots chipped and cracked. So Brian Bacomo has got, got three, he got two bids, one from Palazzo for $2,000 and one from Butler &amp; Sons for $2680. A third company came in from Kingston and looked it, looked it over, but they never submitted a bid. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve adding, it's a similar floor tile to this, and it's going to be, they're just going to add a layer to what's down there already, but it's in really shoddy condition.
So we're not removing?
No. Now, the next, next go around, you got to remove, and that's going to be years and years from now, but that's, you got to get up all the tiles for the third round.
I'm worried about asbestos in the, in the mastic on the tile that we have here. We're going to go over it.
We're just going over it, yeah?
Yeah.
We're good.
There's no issue.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, so, and it was '84, so usually asbestos was discovered in '78, so anything.
We didn't think there was any here.
But this is older than '84, so.
Yeah.
I don't know. That's anecdotal, but $2,000 would be the price. To supply and install 330 square feet of Armstrong standard Exelon Blue Cloud tile at the wastewater facility. I would like to do that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stayed? Carry.
And the bigger issue is the greenhouse, which is where the UV equipment is, that the building's in very poor condition largely because of the exterior paneling, and basically it is a greenhouse building. So the exterior paneling is, it's basically like cardboard where you have two, two sheets kind of on the outside of a film of plastic and then some connecting stuff on the inside to create an air gap. And these panels are starting to get very brittle because they're, they also, I think, from the, from the early 80s, so they all needed to be removed. The ceiling, the roof is built in this, the sides are built in this material. And Ty &amp; Bond has done a report or an RFP package. We would also, there's deteriorated wooden doors at the ends and some flashing and things like that to keep the rainwater from coming in, but we have expensive UV equipment in there. This popped up and also in the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority analysis as being a building that needed help. And so this, instead of the framing, it's like a metal framing, and you can take the covers off, put the panels in, and then screw it back on, is in good shape. So it was really just greenhouse, these greenhouse panels just everywhere that need to be replaced, the greenhouse.
Would they be replaced with the same thing?
It's a similar thing. They've talked to the manufacturer. It's not exact, but whatever the bend.
Something more durable that doesn't crack?
Well, we'll get another, you know, the heat, probably the southern elevation gets a lot of that contraction and, you know, warming up and because the sun just blasted, but we've gotten this much time out of it now, so it'll last quite a long time if we replace it.
But they would give a recommendation on the material, is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, yeah. It come out in the, in the RFP. And they've talked to a couple of companies I think can do this also, just to, they, they threw out a back-of-the-envelope figure of about $90,000. So when I spoke to Karen about this, we could tap into the fund balance for it, but it's something that needs to be done, so.
Is it really urgent?
Well, it's, they're worried, it's starting to leak, you know, and then they, so they try to patch, but then the material's brittle too, so then it re-leaks and then it'll be cracked somewhere else, so. Yeah, I mean, we really need to protect the UV equipment, and that's the Delaware Engineering side of it. So I have two engineers that are kind of opining on the same, the same thing, so.
Yeah, we've been talking about this since March, I think, of the last year.
Right.
This has been on our radar for a long time.
Yeah. So I'd like to get a, I would like to get a resolution just to go out for an RFP, and if, if we come back with some shocking figures, numbers, we can, we can back out then, but.
I think, I personally think that's wise to do.
Okay.
So, if that was your motion, I second it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Opposed? Okay.
And let me see if that's it.
All right, and new for the first time. You're done, Brad? Sorry, are you finished?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can you just tell me again what your motion was?
To go out, out for the RFP on the.
Filtration plant.
The work, the WWTP Filter Building Rehabilitation Project. Wastewater Treatment Plant Filter Building Rehabilitation Project.
Okay. And now for the first time on our village's agenda, we now have an environmental liaison.
Okay, well, maybe I'll kind of balance off of what Brad was talking about with wastewater, start off with a fun fact, which I learned, that to set the village pace, about $40,000 a year, to have 42 tons of human poop actually hauls close to 100 miles to Connecticut where it's incinerated. And so I start with that because one of the things that I'm looking at and the Environmental Committee and the Climate Smart Committee, we're looking, really interested in waste management, organics management. And we attended a DEC webinar about legislation that has to do with food waste and recycling food waste. In January 2022, there's a law coming into, into action where large food waste producers should be required to have their food scraps composted if they're within 25 miles of a composting facility. So this is something that we're researching and trying to come up with a strategy for the village, perhaps in partnership with the town, to raise awareness of this issue with public, how to reduce food waste in the first place, why it's so important, it's actually a huge contributor to greenhouse gases if those, if food waste is then landfilled or incinerated. And in addition to food waste, there's also biosolids. And so there are actually waste of compost biosolids that come out of the wastewater treatment plant. So it's just something I wanted to put on everyone's radar. In terms of policies or procedures, Karen and I have been working on environmentally preferable purchasing policy, which Brad helped with, thank you, and Gary helped with, thank you, and Rich Holson, the lawyer, is now reviewing it. So I hope to be able to bring that to the board in the coming couple of months. And then next up in terms of policy, I'm looking at energy benchmarking. So as you all know, Randic Village is going to be part of this CAPD grant to do greenhouse gas inventory, and part of that process is learning about how do you report to the public on the energy that is consumed by municipal buildings and operations? And then benchmarking means just publicly making that information available. So it's sort of procedural, but we should have a resolution to, to do energy benchmarking. And we would then get points for that actually for our Climate Smart program and the Clean Energy Program as well. So that's coming down, down the pike soon. A little bit of housekeeping. If you're interested in this sort of work, we have a Facebook page now, facebook.com/ClimateSmartRandic. If anybody out there in the public wants to get involved. Also, the website, climate-smart-ryndic.org, was the first cycle of that subscription through Squarespace was generously donated by a member of that task force, Matt Stinchcomb. And so I would like to ask if we could actually move that village over to the village. It's about $140 a year for that website management. And just a note about Squarespace, I can build and maintain that website myself, and it's totally easy and, and immediate.
I second. All in favor of the paying for Squarespace for our governmental page?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you. And next month at the October meeting, we'll have a presentation by our Bard Center for Environmental Policy intern, who's reviewing the comprehensive plan. And it's midway point of his project, it starts over December, so he'll be presenting what he's found thus far at next month's meeting.
Is that our, our master plan?
Well, it's the town comprehensive plan.
The town comprehensive.
So this, this intern is your joint county.
Right.
Village Environmental Committee, and so there's, there's definitely a discussion to be had about the village master plan, which dates from 1993, and has been digitized and is now up on, on the ECO 360 for people to access. But, you know, that's 1993, and then the village comprehensive, I mean, sorry, the town comprehensive plan is 2009. And just as an example, there's not one mention of climate change from the 2009 plan. So how do these two plans coexist? What is their purview? What's the relationship? And then what do we want to do as a village? You know, do we want to update the 1993 plan or do we have some actions and recommendations that we, that we need to concentrate on?
So the, the 1993 plan itself calls for that kind of thing, for, you know, segmented revisions of itself, so.
Yeah.
We could do that.
Right. This intern, his, his focus is just environmental and climate. There could be other things that the board would like to address in an updated village comprehensive plan. In addition, it's just environmental. So maybe that's something we talk about.
It's, it's pretty, it's old, but it's an oldie, but it's a goodie, I mean.
Good bones.
Yeah.
And also at next month's meeting, we'll have Daniel Salisbury finally doing that resiliency planning tool presentation. And so again, this will be about what are the hazards that we face in the village that may be exacerbated by climate change, things like flooding, increased flooding in terms of frequency and intensity in particular.
Yeah, Gary started that with the, I think it was you that started that with the water plant.
Yeah.
Sea level rise.
Yeah.
And that was a big, that was part of the discussion that we had when we did this meeting, planning meeting, you know, kickoff for this as well.
Yeah. And I, and I noticed on the organizational chart, there's also, you know, that line for emergency planning, and that's a lot of what this hazard mitigation and resiliency planning is about. It's about how do we plan ahead for disaster, to prevent disasters, to be as resilient as possible. Okay, and then just one final note, an update on the road salt production. We have, so the village buys the salt from the town, right? So superintendent of the town highway department, Bob Lyons, he's going out and getting quotes that, that both we in the village and the town could look at in terms of equipment for brine, even with brine in the streets. So that would be a way to reduce our expenses in buying salt and reduce the environmental impact of excess salt on the roads. So he's getting quotes, and I'll have an update on that hopefully soon. We're also reaching out to see if there are trainings that the highway departments could do, the actual operators of the highway equipment and the salt trucks. If we were to start doing brine, we would want to make sure that they were supported in that transitioning to new techniques. So we're reaching out and investigating trainings.
Could I ask a question? Why is brine actually more benign than salt? I mean, it's.
It's actually really simple. When you make a brine solution, you're only using a quarter to a third of the amount of salt.
Oh, really?
That it would take to do that same run of just rock salt. So you're cutting down, you're just cutting down your volume of salts.
Right.
And it doesn't have, have as much bounce off of the road, so it stays more contained on the base surfaces and so it's not on the side. So it's, it's, it's not, brine seems to be like a major tool in the toolkit. It's not silver bullet, it's just a tool in the toolkit, but it does have proven impacts on, on less than a sloppy stage.
We had a very informative meeting with the two town highway, with the two highway departments on this subject, and what I learned was, you know, brine is your good first application, but it doesn't, you can't use brine continuously if the snowstorm keeps coming. You put the brine down 20, 48, 24 hours in the head, and that will prepare the surface for that first onslaught of snow before you can bring the plows in, but then after that, you would have to go back to the conventional methods. But it does save on that first.
Right, and hopefully it would save on, you know, cutting down on overtime, labor costs, because you would have more of a window, it would put down that pre-treatment, and you wouldn't have to be rushing people out by the time.
Yeah, we don't have to call them in to put down the salt. They can put it down during working hours.
And we have so many storms that are like a quarter inch of sleet or, yeah.
And that might.
It's right on the margin there.
That might totally make it not even necessary to go out after a storm. If it's about the length of a storm.
I'm curious what Bob Lyons is looking at. Is he looking at the infrastructure to hold the brine, I assume, at, at the town, and also spreader, some means to spread it at both the town and the village, or what's he examining?
So, yeah, exactly. There's adapting the trucks to have these brine tanks mounted on them and be able to spray it out the back of the truck, right? And then you also need tank and tools to mix. And then you also need a tank and tools to mix the brine, meet the brine. And then almost service like a depot where a village, a village could have a brine truck that will go to the town garage and fill up the brine there. And the other piece that we learned at this visit to the garage is washing a rinse station. So post-treating the roads, every truck should come in and get rinsed off. And then the salt, basically, which is very corrosive, needs to get rinsed off of the equipment. And there's a catch basin that is also filtered, so it's environmental friendly. And, but I think they already have that piece in place. And practice already is that the village trucks are also being used there as well as the town. So it's kind of like a three-step process.
Is that it?
No, thank you.
Rick, tree committee.
Tree commission met on September second. The tree commission has established a village pruning corps, which is basically a group of volunteers who will be out about pruning young trees. They have received construction from May, how to do it, Martina. Our village clerk has made up some identification tags, so if you see somebody out on the street with a pruning saw or cutting on a tree, they should be wearing some sort of identification. We're working on getting some T-shirts from the two and for the two, and so they'll be easily identified. But this is an effort that we've, that we've wanted to get going. Basically, the village, we spent a lot of time and effort, volunteer time and effort, putting out new trees and initial training of the trees for the first couple of years is really important to have their long-term continued health. Along those lines, the village board has received the twelve planting sites for the fall planting, which will take place on Saturday, November seventh. And the tree commission has worked out a COVID-friendly sort of pod approach such that people will be working, people basically who are COVID-compatible will be working together and each working in their own pods. So I'd like to make a motion to have the village board accept the twelve tree planting sites for November seventh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. And there was indeed one additional request for removal. It came in after the commission had met, but the commission met via email for the removal of a dead tree at Nine Platte Avenue. Commission voted, suggested that the village board approve that removal. So they postponed it to approve that removal.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
That's it? Okay, other business. Village owned parcels, I don't believe we have an update, correct? Village entrance landscapes.
So, well, I do, yes. I had, I happened to run into Tapata at the farmer's market over the weekend, and we had a discussion. And Tapata would like to, who's a landscaper, would like to come in, help us design some nice plant rings that would go in front of our village entrance signs and also instruct the highway department on how to care, what would be the proper plants and how to care for those plants. So we're looking forward to getting together with Tapata and the highway department and we'll be doing some planting.
All right, and last month we talked about video conference platforms. And our building planning clerk, Ryan Dalman, was suggested as an administrator. I've met with Ryan and I've also talked with our staff here and predominantly, the issue with Ryan is not that he's not, he is capable of doing this because he does run it currently for the planning board and the zoning board administration. But he is at his, and has exceeded his civil service hours already with this current job. So to add one more task to his list puts him already over in addition to what he's already over. So I don't have a village solution for an administrator for a platform at this time.
What about the, the planning board clerk, or the minutes clerk?
Yes, she resigned two months ago.
She did?
Yep. Yep, and Ryan, first they asked Martina to do it. Martina took a stab at it and said this was, I want to put it in a nice way.
Given the frequency of their meetings, it's too much with my current schedule.
Right, because they currently hold pre-meetings for the meetings and then the meetings and then the after-review meetings. And so it requires, that's why Ryan is now at his max in some of the hours.
We're probably trying to find somebody to fill that role to get Ryan out of that again, or?
That's up to, right now, the planning board is looking at what their options are. So I'm waiting to hear back from the planning board. Currently, they're looking at still going back to using Ryan to do that, to that option.
Is that a key position, sorry, or is that a volunteer thing?
I'm sorry, what?
To-
No, they would be, they would come to our meetings, we'd have to pay them a little bit.
Yeah, we'd, most of the other municipal-
No, we look for a person that resigns.
Oh, that was a paid position, that was, yeah.
And they're looking to backfill that?
So I'm waiting for a recommendation from, we are waiting for a recommendation, not me. Paul is waiting for a recommendation from the planning board on what they're going to do. Currently, they're going to use Ryan for their minutes, which is what they were using prior to hiring somebody who now has taken another job and Ryan's back now to doing, Ryan's back now to doing that.
So we need to find an administrator, assume for-
You know, it really boils down to, I think in my mind, a longer-term strategy as to what sort of positions we need. And, you know, quite frankly, if the village, the referendum is not happening, court consolidation happens, you know, one thing to consider with the found money, so to speak, is doing best in an administrative position that would take care of some of these loose ends for us. It's something to consider because we're short. I mean, we need that sort of help to relieve the planning board and others of those sorts of administrative tasks. And also they raise the level of professionalism, so it's something to consider long-term.
Do you recall how many hours that person?
I'm sorry?
Do you recall how many hours that person got?
Oh, goodness.
Karen would be best probably to look at the records and draw the last factor.
Well, we just paid her by voucher, so we'll have to see if she put the hours in.
And since that time, though, we've added now an additional meeting, which is the pre-meeting for the meeting.
Yeah.
And just, yeah, just a case in point, that the person that was in the position prior to Ryan, Ryan was full-time for the planning superintendent position.
Right.
That was Ryan's position and the minutes person.
Well, Karen McClellan.
Yeah.
No, no, she's, no, we had hired, the planning board had hired Melissa, I think, I forget her name.
LeRice.
To do, yeah, to do it. And I think that's what Brad's talking about is that position.
Oh, okay, yeah. I'll have to look and see if she put that-
Because then if they did that, those meetings, and then they could do our meetings.
But they now, but my point is, Brad, the planning board has increased their activity more than when after that person had left, so now there's more work on top of it. So the job description has changed-
Yeah.
since before, that's all. And so it's just, we don't have, in-house, we don't have somebody right now.
We could advertise.
Okay, moving on. Special request, music on Market Street October dates. This is a request by the chamber to continue into October for the music on Market, which has been a very successful thing for them right now. It seems to be going very well. We've had no, that I'm aware of, no issues reported into any of our agencies, the result. And so they want to continue this, you guys read the application, I don't have to read all the dates, but they want to continue through October, up to November first. With the music on Market Friday evenings, five-thirty to seven-thirty. I make a motion to accept music on Market Streets by the Chamber.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What?
Trustee course accepted.
Yeah.
Well, we have majority. Just Paul was absent at the time.
Supermajority.
The next event, the next event is the annual Turkey Trot at Fern Cliff Forest. So this is an annual Turkey Trot. The event date is November twenty-sixth to twenty, setup time is six AM, event start time is at eight AM, event end time eleven AM, and teardown is thirty minutes. They are requesting, due to COVID-nineteen, new socially-distanced plan for our Turkey Trot this year with a staggered start over twenty to thirty minutes to space out runners. Runners will be timed, time will be started when across the line, et cetera. A tent will be set up outside for signing up. They're asking for pre-entry. There'll be no award ceremony at the end. I would like to offer a little bit of discussion because so far to date, we have, nobody has approved any road-type races because of the gathering limit of fifty people, which is imposed currently by the state of New York. So I have reached out to the county and have asked the county to reach out to the state to give us guidance on this, you know, in terms of rehab it. I think it's an important thing to do, to have money to raise for Fern Cliff Forest, but we also have to meet with the COVID guidelines. And I have, I reached out to them Friday when I saw this, and I haven't heard back from the county yet today on whether this would be allowed or not from the state. So I don't know how to proceed without having-
Can we approve it pending state approval?
I suppose. Have we, have you talked to Pete about this? Has Pete approved this?
No.
So we would have to prove it for, we'd have to prove it pending, because this came in late.
It did, it came in late for me.
Can we approve it in October?
Yeah, I think so, because, well, Wednesday-
It's a turkey trot.
November twenty-sixth.
I think, isn't it like Thanksgiving morning?
But don't they have to get applications out and everything?
They probably need to start advertising.
It's a local thing, you know?
Yeah, but they, I think they need time to advertise for runners and collect the money. And if we wait till the second week of November, that's pretty tight.
So I think our October, our next meeting will be October second, Tuesday in October. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application pending the ascent of our sergeant Dunn and pending guidance from the state of New York.
And county.
And county.
Yep. I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, very good. I will work on getting the county and state approval. Minutes approval for eight twenty twenty twenty. I'd like to make a motion to accept a minutes as entered by the clerk for August twenty 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 meeting.
Second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? No, very good, all right. And then the last thing is, we have personnel anniversaries, which I always am happy to announce. We have such, we really have great people. Our acting, our acting highway foreman, Scott Minn, who we all know so very well, very diligent out there, is now celebrating twenty-five years for the village of Ryan Beck. Congratulations, Scott, thank you. And our chief water plant operator, Brian Alex, right? Seven years for the village of Ryan Beck.
Seven years.
Yep, so congratulations to both Scott Minn and Brian Alex, who really serve key positions here in the village of Ryan Beck, and we're very thankful to have them. All right, so last is all correspondence we received tonight for all the subject matters is on file, out on our village website, and will be posted for everybody to review. So comments are, all comments received are posted. Time is now nine twenty-nine. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's a wrap. Thank you, Panda.